Okay, so we've got, I see we've got Dave, we've got Tracy and myself. Looks like we've got a quorum. So I say we get going. All right, I'll call to order the town of Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting for March 23rd, 2022. Welcome aboard. We are still in this hybrid, hybrid period where we've got board members often are present both online and in person tonight. Tracy Loftus Keller, myself, Chair William Hanley are here in the meeting hall on C Street. And we've got Dave Ashmore online from the great state of Florida, Dave.
Still here.
All right, well, enjoy it while you can.
Okay.
And, you know, we've got, so, see, we've got a couple people online and just, I would encourage anybody who's online. If you could go into chat and just sign in on chat, it just, you know, it's been the standard protocol for us because it just helps with attendance. And everybody knows, I'm sure by now, standard Zoom protocol. If you're not talking, please mute yourself and let's, let's get on with it. So minutes, we've got some minutes. I don't think we do.
Finishing up the March night.
Okay.
Good, great.
I was worried.
Yeah, I was, didn't see anything come through and.
I think we're all set.
Right.
Two is the last one and I, they're done, they're just not edited and approved.
Excellent. So no minutes, breezing right through this. So let's keep going. Item three on the agenda tonight, we have a conditional use approval application. And it is conditional use approval application 52022. Owner name is Chase House LLC, location 1347 Main Street, Mount Desert, tax map seven lot 61. Zone is Shoreland Residential 2, purpose section 6B, fences and walls exceeding CEO authority. We had a site inspection at 4:30 and was this one advertised and butters notified?
Anything of that nature here. Like Kim Dash. Oh, hiding in the back. Okay.
Hiding in the back.
Looks like it was published in the Mount Desert Islander on Thursday, March 10th, 2022.
Yeah.
Do we have any butters notification?
Yeah, should be in the packet.
I try again.
See any in there? What's that in there?
We have the, sure, you see that it's.
I don't see a butters, maybe it's a test.
Right there, yeah, right there.
Oh, here, here. Okay, yep, butters were notified by letter dated March 4.
Excellent.
There were six of others notified. Yeah.
Fantastic. So we, so we had a site visit at 4:30. Tracy and I both attended that. And Bart, I think your sister-in-law was there at the site visit.
That's correct. She was there.
Nice to meet her. And Tracy, I'll give you the honor of reporting on the site visit.
Okay, I'll give it a try, although not quite sure how this is going to sound. But, um, so I observed, I drove in from the,
South.
From the south, so I came downhill and the lake was on my left-hand side. And the land rose from the driveway road up to the highway above me. And from the driveway, I walked down to just in front of the house and then came back up again. And I observed the guardrail and stream. And it was hard to, well, I should say, at first I wasn't quite sure what the exact location of the fence is. But now I understand that it just goes immediately behind the existing guardrail. And yes, even at this quiet time of year, there were a number of cars going by and the road noise was notable. And it's a very nice location though. That's, that's my report.
Sounds good. I would say I observed, observed the same. I mean, the driveway is a pull-through driveway. It's a long, long skinny lot, you know, running a little parallel to Route 102 and Echo Lake. Yeah, the elevation of the camp is much lower than 102. The road noise is pretty pronounced. We observed the, the guardrail, the, the stream there, the telephone pole. And it was just a little tough kind of placing exactly where the fence is. But we referred to the applicant noting that it's about 152 feet long. And that kind of felt like about what maybe the railing length was. And Bart, I'll let you take it from there.
Okay, well, just to comment on what you both observed, there is a lot of tire noise. And a fence will, will help mute some of that, deflect some of the noise. And the fence location is right to be installed. We're proposing installed on the ridge. It's a steep slope and it is behind the rail. If you're facing, if your back is facing Route 102 and you're looking down at the structure that is a garage slash studio, it is pretty much, the fence would start pretty much to the left of that. It starts, in fact, on the property line of the park, which is well delineated by, by markers that are out, established by the park and would run from that point about 100, 152 feet to where there is a ridge that starts going higher. And that's where we would stop the fence. No need to put a fence on top of that ridge. And we would turn it in about one section. And I think it would look pretty well aesthetically with that turn in where that ridge is. I don't know if you noted where it does get higher. It's kind of a slope. There'd be no need for cutting any trees, if, if any. There are some shrubs, small shrubs that might have to be trimmed back. But we did stake a line. Don't know if that line still exists there. I haven't worked, walked the property in a few weeks since the last snow. But we did stake it to show pretty much where, where the fence poles would go. And I request the board's consideration to have it installed.
Oh, and I'd also like to note that we did get MDOT approval for our proposal. I don't know if that's part of your file.
Yes.
We do, Bart, we've got a letter from the MDOT from March 7th. And stating their approval of the project.
So I have nothing else to add and I'm available to answer questions, of course.
And, and Kim reminded me that we reviewed this about a year ago.
September 23rd, 2020.
Yeah.
Yeah, that application was for an eight-foot fence. We've reduced the size to, to six, six feet.
Yeah, that, that was one of my first questions, Bart, is just trying to decipher if it's an eight-foot or a six-foot fence. And it's pretty clear now, it's a six-foot fence. And then my, my other question was, you know, the, where the fence line is, what's happening between the fence line and the guardrail? And you just explained that you guys aren't going to be mowing down a landing strip for it. You're going to try to work through the existing vegetation and hopefully not cut any trees. And that, you know, if anything is cut, it's just kind of low shrub-like vegetation.
That's correct. There are no trees that are in line of the fence line that we, we look to construct the fence. At most, there are some low grasses and shrubs that would need to be trimmed. No, no cutting of trees is envisioned where necessary.
All right, well, I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody like to speak about the project?
Hannah.
Mr. Shields. You're on. Go for it. Just unmute yourself, please. Just hit the speak.
That's my hand. Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
No comment.
No, sorry.
I thought his hand was. It was the towel there.
All right, just checking if there's any public comment then.
Yes, Bill, I have a comment.
Yes.
Just a question. We're just trying to figure out, you guys, this is downhill from us. Is this near Dave Schwick's place? We're just trying to figure out where it is exactly.
It is. It's just, I believe it's just north of it.
So do you guys, Bart?
Yeah, I don't know my neighbor. I don't know that name and I don't, I'm familiar with the houses, but.
He's got the other fence up there that.
Yeah, I think he may, I'm not familiar with him. I haven't met him. But I, I believe there is another fence there that is at the end of the, the drive that goes all the way through.
Yeah, we're just trying to figure out exactly where. We couldn't make the site thing.
But, Bart, and then actually, Mr. Cash.
Yeah.
Bart Chase's lot, it's Bart Chase's lot, and then it's Acadia National Park, and then it's Swick's.
God, is that going north then?
Yeah, going towards some of those harbor, yeah.
Oh, I see. Okay, got it. Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Scott Hemmway.
Yes.
Good evening. We're, we have the property directly across the road, or pretty much directly across the road from this location where Mr. Chase is proposing to put up the fence. Simple questions. I have heard that it's going to be six feet tall. Is there a material selected for the fence?
It is a cedar fence, stockade style.
And so it'll be a stained finish or just left natural to gray over time or?
Yeah, my, my anticipation is not to stain it or paint it, but let it age a silver gray.
Okay. And then you mentioned it's going to be behind the guardrail. Is there a distance behind the guardrail you're, you're trying for or is it up to the guardrail or?
So I want to comply with the, of course, the, the ordinance or the regulation as well as the MDOT approval. And that is 26 feet from the center line of Route 102, which is approximately from the guardrail, I'd say, six to eight feet from the guardrail. And the intention is to keep it on that ridge. Once, it's a very steep slope. So if you go beyond the ridge, it, it doesn't make sense to put the fence because it's on a steep slope.
Okay, thank you.
This, um, this doesn't meet the ordinance, hence the reason why Mr. Chase is going to the planning board. If he was putting up a six-foot fence, he would need to meet from the center line of Route 102, 39 feet. But because the planning board has authority to waive the setback because he's not meeting the six-foot height requirement for the fencing, that's why we're before the planning board tonight.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add to my application as well as the board's perhaps appreciation that there are other fences on, on Route 102 that are perhaps grandfathered or what. But, you know, we look to comply with what the regs are here and get approval to maintain it as a nice sightline and a safe distance from the road and compliance with MDOT has approved.
Yeah, that was one of the, one of the things I did after the site visit was I just kind of drove down to Dave Swick's camp, just to refresh my memory, what his, his fence is to the south. And then drove back up to the north and kind of looked at the other fences along 102 there. And they, they're all, they're all in a similar vein. They're all six-foot stockade-style fences for the most part. Any, any other public comment? Okay, unheard. I'll close public comment and let's get into the review of the application. So.
All right, Dave, do you have a second there?
Dave, we, we have a motion to find the application complete and we need a second.
A second.
Right, all those in favor? Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. And then, yes, anybody care to make a motion to use the short form?
Sure, I'll make a motion to use the short form.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Right, all those in favor? Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
And myself, William Hanley, short form checklist it is. And then we do our little thing where we make a motion to approve the application.
Tracy Keller, I make a motion to approve the application.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Then we press the pause button for the review of the application. And one of these days, I want to figure out why we do that.
So you make a motion.
Yes.
And then you do your discussion before you make the vote.
Right.
Is your discussion.
Correct.
That's why you do it that way.
Hey, did you get all the public that is on there?
I believe I did. I got David Shield, Scott, Dave, Bart, and. I did.
Okay, because all the names on the side in each.
Okay, I've got the short form checklist. I've got the application in front of me and let's, let's go through it. So section 6A1 compatibility. Compatibility, they talk about the physical size, visual impact, proximity to other structure, density of development. I'm going to say C application. 6A2 erosion and sedimentation control. The applicant talks about the metal posts are being used on the structured side of the fence. And they're drilled in the ledge. There's really minimal soil disturbance, if any. C application. 6A3 highway safety. Got the letter from MDOT. I'm going to say C application. Impact on town services. Application circles not have any impact. C application. Land suitability. Applicant says the installation of fence will have no adverse environmental impact.
Also got the Hancock County soil.
Yeah, during or after installation. And Kim just said that we have the Hancock County soil report there as well. C application. 6A6 lighting outdoor. There's no lighting proposed. NA. Stormwater 6A7. Applicant says that the fence will be constructed and detailed above ground to allow existing stormwater runoff. The, the fence will be installed.
Will be constructed.
Constructed and installed. Above grade, thank you. And that the existing stormwater will runoff in its natural course. So C application. Vegetation application. Applicant says that the, no, no trees need to be removed to install the fence. So C application. 6A9 dust fumes, vapors, odors and gases. Applicant says NA. Then the findings of fact are as presented by the applicant in the attached application. And the conclusion was that proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section 6A. If anybody wants to turn that into a motion, feel free.
Make a motion that all, all the standards are in compliance with part 6A.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, second.
Right, all those in favor? Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
We've asked more, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. Right, then. Yeah, 6B, section 6B, specific performance standards for activities, land uses. The reason we are all here tonight is because of section 6B8, fences and walls. And all the other sections are NA. I assume, Bart, you're not proposing to put in a cell tower or air landing strip?
It hasn't crossed our agenda and we'll present that to the board on another application if that was under consideration. That's a, that's a joke, of course.
All right, so looking at the application under 6B8, applicant talks about that a conditional use approval is requested. It's not restricting scenic views, no plans for vegetation screening. The area between the fence and the highway is already, has some natural grasses and plants and shrubs. Mature trees will not be cut. C application. So then, the findings of fact are that the proposed use will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section 6B except for section 6B8. And that the conclusion law is that section 6B is not applicable except for section 6B8 for which the standard has been met.
So moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All right, all those in favor? Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. All right. Section 6C. Since we are in the Shoreland Residential 2, we are going to go through section 6C. Shoreland resident, Shoreland zoning standards for review by the planning board. And let's look at this. So 61 agriculture is NA. Yeah, and section 6C2 should be completely applicable.
In maps of that.
And the applicant has a map attached, so C application. 6C3 essential services, NA. 6C6 parking areas, NA. 6C7 marine and freshwater structure standards, NA. 69 roads and driveways. And 6C11 water quality is NA. So the findings of fact are that the proposed use will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section 60 except for section 62. In the conclusion laws, that section 60 is not applicable except for section 62 for which the standard has been met.
Can I say so moved again?
You may.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor? Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. No section five.
Yeah, it's in your packet. It's like third on the last page. And you have plenty more.
Yeah, but I don't have it on. Oh, wait, I got it. All right, section 59, since we are in the Shoreland Zone. So let's go through it. And let me get aligned. Aligned here in the packet submitted. Okay, section 591 will maintain safe and healthful conditions. C application. 592 will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters. C application. 593 will adequately, adequately provide for the disposable wastewater, NA. 594 will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird or other wildlife habitat. Applicant says NA. 595 will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. NA. 596 will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comp plan. C application. 597 will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing. NA. 598 will avoid problems associated with the flood plain. See, C application. And 599 is in conformance with the provisions of sections 6A, B and C. And the standards have been met. So on 59, the conclusion, the findings of fact are C above. And the conclusion law are, is that the all requirements for section 59 have been met.
So moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Right, all those in favor? Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. And then permit conditions. There are permit conditions on this.
Um, he's got MDOT, that was one of the requirements.
Yeah.
No, just the, he just needs to pull a building permit prior to erected the fence. And the structural side needs to face you, not the street.
Okay.
Okay. No, that's, no, I wouldn't put that as a condition because it's in the application. So other than that, that's it.
Right, well, then circling back to the approval vote, I'll press the play button. All those in favor of approving the application? Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. Congratulations.
Thank you, William, and I appreciate all the board members' consideration and approval of the application. Thank you.
Tracy. And that's it. And that's it, is there any other, other tonight? No. Dave, you want to make your favorite motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Tracy Keller, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. See you tomorrow night.
Okay.